Just a little bit more time for one of our commissioners to arrive. Today, we'll have five of us here to go through this workshop. Couple of folks, a couple of the commissioners are out of town. And Commissioner Flowers will be joining us here shortly. Today, we're going to do an update on the state of emergency and talk about rescinding the local state of emergency. Then we're going to have a workshop just on one item. It's really the Grand Canal dredging project, kind of get some staff work, staff us up a little bit. And then finish with the agenda briefing. So Barry, without further ado, let's get to you and get the review underway.
Okay, well, good morning, commissioners. Luckily, as you're well aware, we dodged a bullet as the storm kind of went around us and most of the impacts were over in Polk County and then north of us. When also reached us, though, you know, it was at hurricane strength from the flights, but we really never received sustained winds at hurricane strength. The wind gust in Pinellas County got up to about 59 miles an hour in some spots. It produced about one to two feet of storm surge. At the maximum, we had about 6,900 customers that lost power. No major storm damage or injuries reported. There were actually fewer 911 calls than normal because people, you know, kind of sheltered in place and weren't out on the roads. We had no water rescues, which always occurs, you know, in low-lying areas as they get, you know, storm surge in the middle of the night. So overall, it was a non-event, you know? We were ready for the worst. Luckily, we didn't have to activate and do that. But we were ready. We had a level-two activation. Yesterday, we closed the Citizen Information Center at 3:00. During that time period, we took 1,600 calls from residents and another 870 live chats. So people were concerned. They were calling in. As you know, we opened two community shelters at Lowman Exchange and at Ross Norton. We had 170 people go to those shelters, 11 dogs and one cat. So for those that needed them, you know, and didn't feel comfortable at home, it was there for them. And so it was a good community resource for those that needed to go there. We had a few lift stations that lost power, but we used generators to keep those going. We did not have to issue boil alerts. Our public works crews, you know, they worked to drain hotspots and keep everything flowing. Sunstar had a number of calls, you know, but we had a few downed trees, some minor flooding. But overall, not a bad event. We did not have to use any emergency authority. We did not do any mandates or emergency purchases or anything like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but other than that, you know, we didn't really use the authority granted under the emergency powers. But, you know, if we needed to, we had it available, which is the whole purpose of doing it.
Yeah, questions for Barry? Yeah, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not really a question, just want to thank you and the entire staff, emergency management, communications. All the information that you shared with us, we were able to share with our social media and our email blast and things like that. So it's a great resource, so thank you.
Thank you. The emergency management team did an amazing job, and I mean the whole team.
Commissioner Gerard.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Justice for being our local weatherman. Our Dennis Phillips of the commission. Rule number seven. Oh, I forgot what I was going to ask.
Will you hold that thought?
Well, I'm just hoping. This, I mean, I've lived here for 50 years. I think this is the first time, the closest that a hurricane's actually gotten to us that was sort of technically a hurricane. And I'm just hoping people don't get complacent about that because this was not a hurricane in the, you know, usual sense of the word. I didn't see anybody getting really excited about it, which is a little scary, actually.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's really hard because you're, so, I mean, for, I think for the public, one of the things to remember is it takes us 17 hours using transport resources to clear the barrier islands. And so you're looking at a hurricane potential, and you have to wait until it crosses Cuba, which gives you now 11 hours after it does that at the speed it was going. And remember, it was moving faster before. So you're trying to make some decisions, and you don't want to cry wolf and take, you know, but that's the challenge that we have in trying to try to make those right decisions. And luckily, you know, it did slow down, and we felt pretty comfortable where we were at on this one. But had it been bigger, you know, you're trying to make these decisions, and as Commissioner Justice shows you all, you're getting a spaghetti map of 50 different ways it can go, and, you know, and you're trying to make the best judgment call and not, you know, put people in harm's way if it does come at us at full strength. So, yeah, that is the decision-making that we kind of go through, and we pull all of our experts together and we try to make the best call we can.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Barry, for those well-put words. And all of what has been said at this point just bears more importance to our continuing to work as a well-oiled team because clearly, we were as prepared as any county could possibly be. And I give you and the sheriff and Lordis and all of Della Jewel, there you just cannot go down the list. Jill, you know, incredible kudos for coming together, which we have been doing all through this past year during the pandemic. And I just love that the leadership team is not vested in just one individual. It's a team of very good, knowledgeable experts that can come together and know how to work together. So I think that's a big part of why we have been so successful, and I would like to thank that in the big picture, our citizens appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one last thought from, is, yeah, it's, most of us have lived here a long time, and we can kind of joke about it or take, get a little complacent. And it's important not to panic over a tropical depression, you know, just coming off the coast of Africa. But all we have to do is look at Michael a couple of years ago to see how it can go from a storm that's supposed to completely dissipate to a devastation overnight. And so it's just something to always keep on our radars.
Anybody else? Yeah, Barry, I too wanted to pass along my kudos to your team, your organization. Also, what seemed to be a really good communication with the governor's office as well as our own partners, the city partners. So it obviously has one conversation in the morning and then one with our partners in the afternoon. So just maybe you could speak to that a little bit, just that dynamic. And then maybe a little bit to the beach operations aspect that we implemented, but it was a little softer than it would, could be. You know, the keeping people off the beaches or keep, you know, getting people. Just talk a little bit to that, those two items, it would be great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, commissioners. The team does operate well. And when I say the team, it's, you know, from the sheriff to health department, you know, to all of our different departments and community partners. You know, we have the Red Cross, you know, over helping out our shelters. And so it really is a team effort and through a sensible word from everybody kind of pitching in. When we were trying to figure out, because remember, at a category-one hurricane, an evacuation, we were going to open 13 shelters, but we ended up only opening two. But guess what? I need people, you know, to run those shelters, and I've got a really quick time period to do that. I put out a call for volunteers, and we had 125 county employees step forward. I mean, that's amazing, you know? And so it's that type of teamwork where people understand the need, you know, for us to come together to be prepared and do our job if we need to. And so everybody does work together. With our community partners, we do, it's called a rock call, and we do that typically in the afternoon, and that's all of our preparations. We have over 200 people on that rock call. I'd have to get the number from Lordis, but it's up there. We, I did some direct city manager calls, but I also push the city managers to that rock call. All the cities have, like their public works directors or emergency management people on that call. And so that's kind of the coordination effort, everybody from people that are doing housing to all kinds of community volunteers. So we did a couple of those just as a coordination, touch base, what are your resource needs? Make sure, so we have, it's called Web U O C, and so that is our automated way. They can put in the requisitions for if they need, you know, a backhoe or they need some type of assistance. That's where you go and you put that in, we source that. We can go to the state, you know, that's the governor's order. That avails us to be able to utilize state resources. So if we can't fulfill that, then we can push that up and get regional assistance through the state. And so that coordinated response is key, and we work really well together as a whole community to provide that type of coordinated response.
And then a little bit just about the beach operations and keeping folks from getting onto the beaches or coming off the beaches and the sheriff's role in that. We got a couple of emails.
Yeah, we made, Sheriff and I made a call early on that, you know, we don't need to do mandatory evacuations, but we also know that, you know, when you have a weather event like that, people are going to see that as something cool to watch, you know? Or grab their surfboard and go try to ride the waves and, you know, things that we don't need. We have a lot of people that live on the beach, or they're in a hotel, or they got a business, they have a reason to be there. And so the sheriff posted resources to prevent people that didn't need to go down there from going down there. And what we were really concerned about is obviously in the morning, you know, we, at that time, we anticipated when we made that call that we were going to have downed power lines, downed trees. We didn't think it was going to be devastating, but, you know, it takes time to clean that stuff up. And so we didn't need people that didn't need to be there. And so that's the reason that he posted resources to be able to prevent people to go. If you needed to be down there, you work at a business, you own a business, you are in a hotel, then obviously, they would let you through. But we were telling people just to go home if you didn't have a reason to be there.
And then the final question I had, Barry, was, you know, fast forward a couple of months, and we're in the middle of schools session, and we have issues like, it came up, another storm comes. Who is primarily at this point responsible for staffing those schools? Would we do it in partnership, or is it pretty much, it used to be a school function, but now it's a mixed?
It's a partnership between the schools and us. And so they, you know, they own their building, they have their maintenance, they have their food service and things like that. And then we get volunteers to run our sheltering operations. And so that changed, you know, during the pandemic and concern out of people getting, you know, COVID. And so we've tried to partner on that. Dr. Greco and the schools have been great partners. And so that's more typical of the way other communities have run that. So we do have some challenges when we get up to a level-three hurricane, if that occurred, on being able to staff those. But that's where, you know, our employees have really stepped forward, and we need to continue to work on that and expand that out and get city participation and others. So there's some work to do there, but it's a true partnership. He's part of our leadership team, you know? So our executive policy team, you know, includes schools, includes sheriff, includes Dr. Cho, includes, you know, emergency management and, you know, Lordis and others. So we come together and make those decisions together.
Yeah, and it's certainly not an easy thing to leave your home and go work at a shelter, but clearly, for our residents, one of the most important things that we do at those times. So appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Long.
Yes. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to switch gears totally, Barry, at our meeting on Tuesday, would it be possible to have Dr. Cho come and give us an update on the deviant rising cases? I am continuing to receive calls and emails about that issue, and there doesn't seem to be much specific data yet that we know of for Pinellas. But I do think, given what's going on around us and throughout the state and nation, that it would be important for us to pay attention.
I would be happy to ask Dr. Cho. I haven't asked him at this point to be there, so unless he has an engagement that he can't break, I'm sure he would be happy to come. So I'll ask Lordis to reach out to him.
Thank you.
And Barry, I'm assuming that you don't really need the state of emergency anymore?
I do not.
So we can take action on rescinding that this morning?
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions or issues on that? And if not, I need a motion to rescind the state of emergency. Commissioner Flowers made the motion, Commissioner Gerard made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, state of emergency officially has been rescinded. Okay, Barry, let's move on to really the one workshop item aside from the agenda briefing that we have today.
Okay, good morning again. This workshop item is on the Grand Canal and the dredging project out there. I'm going to ask Kelly to come forward and give you an update I then want to talk about. You know, we know the concerns that are out, and I want to fill in kind of, you know, some of the financial issues involved, but I'll do it after she kind of concludes her presentation. So go ahead, Kelly.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Kelly Hammerle, the Director of Public Works. All right, so congratulations to the lightning.
Yes.
That was a sweet surprise this morning. So, yes, good morning. Back in May of 2020, we brought forward a study that had been looking at the Grand Canal issue and navigational issues in the area generally. With that, the board asked us to move forward with looking at the Grand Canal specifically and designing and permitting a project to address the navigational challenges in the area. So just want to provide a little bit of development history. These questions have come up a lot of times, you know, with regard to how the Grand Canal came to be. And so generally, what you're looking at in that left-hand photo is a very shallow system that's from 1951, before anything really happened out there. See a lot of sand. It's, you know, generally a very dynamic system, and that has continued to its present day. Back in 1957, the Chairverdi Corporation submitted a permit to the state and to the county to dredge and fill this area. And you can see over to the right-hand side, the areas that they proposed to dredge, which includes the Grand Canal area right there and Big Pine and Pine Key Pass right there, and then the Finger Canal's here. Also shows another development down here that never occurred. So, you know, that is generally, you know, how that came to be was through the development project by the Chairverdi Corporation. And we kind of look at modern day today. This is, you know, what we're seeing today. We've got the Grand Canal that everybody is most familiar with. And then I just took that development plan and kind of laid out the modern configuration and what it looks like. So just some general points. You can see Pine Key is now, you know, a developed community. You can see, you know, the Pine Key cutoff right here is that relict channel system there. The Grand Canal, you know, here and its alignment is here. You can see Shell Key is this tiny little island here that has evolved into this large barrier system. Cabbage Key is to here. And, you know, the area that apparently was to be developed actually became part of Shell Key Preserve. So just a little history on how the area has evolved through time. So I mentioned back in 2020, Aptim was brought on board to take the University of South Florida's study to the next level, to specifically look at how and what and, you know, what are the causes and how this system has changed through time. And what we reinforced was that, you know, this area is much bigger than this localized issue. It is part of the inlet complex of Tampa Bay, which has a significant amount of sand contributing to this area. It's also part of the Passag grill system. We have seen significant regional changes to this shoal system over the last 50 to six years. You can see it in these aerials along the bottom. I've tried to highlight, you know, in yellow, how that system has evolved through time and grown into, you know, larger shoals. But what we did also learn from this study was that the closing of the pass there at the north, the North Shell Key Pass, which separates, you know, the interior of Shell Key from Grand Canal, was not from beach or nourishment, okay? It was part of, it's part of this complex. And so what the conclusions were from the study, and the blue is in this aerial shows you areas of sand loss, red shows you areas of sand gain. And over a period of time, about 30,000 cubic yards of sand has been eroding from the west shoreline of Shell Key, moving to the north and then shifting to the east and closing off that area and creating quite a large berm of sand there. We also know that water flow, both measured and modeled within the Grand Canal is very low, all right? There's not a lot of tidal flushing through there, and that is not something that we can change, all right? That's a natural condition. We learned that opening We learned that opening, you know, North Pass, again, that's, that's the north-south cut, not the east-west cut, is not, is not feasible. One, because the sand is continuing to migrate to the east and two, because of private property issues in that location. And that the recommendation that came out of the study was that if we can best manage sand within the Grand Canal proper, that is, that is something that's more easily permitted and more easily managed in the long term. So taking that information, you know, we, oh, sorry, sir.
Thanks, Kelly. When you mentioned the shifting sands, your comment, I believe, was over a period of time. Could you be a little more specific about what that period of time was? I have a reason for asking that question.
You know, we received complaints about this area closing off as early as 2011. All right, and then there was the private dredging effort that occurred around 2013, I believe, that closed about six months later. There were some storms that kind of changed the configuration and then, you know, this is more, this picture right here is, I think, more modern. It's, I believe this is 2015 through 2019 evolution.
Okay. I have a couple more questions about the shifting sands in that particular area, but I'll save them until you get done because you may answer my questions.
Okay, sure. No problem. Oh, yes, sir.
Just back to the, I always get the, the names of the facilities messed up, but the Shell Key area that filled in.
The north, what is called Shell Key North Pass?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You said, you said, I think, three different things. You said that there's private property issues, which, you know, again, I just don't, I don't understand that piece. You said there's migrating sand and permitting would be a challenge. It just seems to me, is there any, is there, aside from those minor little problems that you just mentioned, I'm kidding, I know that they're significant, but aside from that, there seems to be just an opportunity to have a lot of, I guess, tidal, not tidal, but you open that up, the flow of the water really would benefit this area of Bunce's Pass or the Grand Canal from building up. Is there any, do you feel that? Do you sense that out there at all? Or is it worth the effort to try to open that up even though it would be a challenge? Or is it just impossible? I mean, and I'm not even saying this first go-around, maybe we, this first go-around, we have to do the dredging there, but is there something that we should be looking at there to kind of have that more of a, that flow going a little better and maybe not allowing as much buildup? Or is that just, just your thoughts on that?
Well, the thing is, we can't, we cannot increase the tidal prism. The tidal prism is what it is. So if we, you know, if we were to try to force that to stay open and I don't even, I mean, it would require extensive armoring, probably sheet piling, extensive dredging within the preserve to force it, then you're basically stealing from the other inlet. So if you think of the inlet like a pie, you know, the pie slices, you know, can, you can make the pie slices smaller, but you can't increase the size of the pie. It just, you have, you know, just, the tidal prism is not infinite. So it really won't. And as a matter of fact, the South Channel, what they call South Paso Grille Channel, closed on its own and it closed from the pressures of these, of these shoals building. And that is outlined in both Dr., both in the Aptim study and Dr. Wang's work is, you know, the channel kind of comes this way and you can start to see this is, this is building. Well, soon as, soon as this completely closed off, you know, this, this channel here weakened and the flow basically went to nothing. So it would, it would, it would take a huge manipulation to try to recreate that South Channel. And again, it's not going to create, you know, more flow in the system. It'll, it'll, it'll remove flow from Paso Grille Channel. It may impact Bunce's Pass, but we're not going to create more water flow. It's, it's got to come from somewhere else. It's got to come from one of the two existing inlets.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So we moved forward with developing the scope of service for the design of the Grand Canal dredging and what we called Basin A in the report. And it's, it's called Basin Three here because Basin A evolved into three different designs. So Basin Three was the most permissible and, and provided the best outcome. So I'm just going to talk about Basin Three. But I wanted to refer back to Basin A because if someone goes back to the Aptim study, it's called Basin A in that, in that document. All right, so in anywhere where there's a gold star, that's a really important thing and I don't want to forget about it, so please don't let me forget about it. So I've, I've heard a lot about, can we hurry this up? Can we hurry this up? Can we hurry this up? And we can to a point, but there is a lot of permitting hurdles to dredging out a new project like this. This is not considered a maintenance dredge. Basin Three is a brand-new dredge. We have to do extensive resource assessment. We have to get approval from the state's cultural resource group and looking at, you know, potential cultural remains that may be in there. There's a lot of survey and bathymetry work, geotechnical evaluation. We have to look at that material to determine what, how we can properly dispose of it. And then we have to model all those alternatives and we have to be able to demonstrate, one, that it's going to work and two, that we're not going to cause harm somewhere else. And so the design that we have is generally laid out in that picture to the left and it, the Grand Canal follows its existing alignment. There's no proposed change to that alignment. And that was how it was dredged back in, as part of the Tier Verdi Development Corporation's project and that alignment would be proposed to stay. Basin Three is basically a sand sump, if you will. So as sand is moving from west to east, sand would fill in that basin first before it would ever impact the channel, keeping the channel open for a longer period of time. So that is, that is the design, those are the two key components of the design that we've been looking at. And then the bigger challenge was what do we do with this material and where do we put it? You know, so that goes into quality of material and what its qualifying uses are. We've been trying to look very carefully at public purpose to that material because if we can find a public purpose to that material, then there's an opportunity for the county to participate in the project. And then we are required to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Protection. So it's, it's not a, it's, it's not just a rubber stamp process. It takes time, it takes a lot of data collection and, and that is what we've been doing for the past year.
And the basin three then, Kelly, that's the area that would be, kind of capture the sand in the future that would have to be?
Cleaned out periodically.
Cleaned out periodically to keep the canal open.
Yes.
Okay.
And that, the, I mean, I, that design is, that box is there, but in, but in reality, if this moves forward, that, the shape of that area would migrate with the mean-high water line because that is where Colony Key owns too. So Colony Key owns that accreted sand to the mean-high water line. So that would have to, it's kind of a floating boundary, if you will. We have it surveyed, but it does, obviously it does change through time.
When you go into the canal, before you start to go north there, there's a lot of sand that's built up over there as well. Is that an area that we would be clearing out as also, or is it just the basin and the, and the main, and the main canal?
Just the basin and the main canal. Again, that, that accreted sand there is owned by the Upland Riparian owners to the mean-high water line.
Okay. The, just, I was just trying to picture, I was out there the other day, thank you Sharon Calvert and her husband for getting me out on their boat so I could kind of get through that area and just try to understand and see it a little better. Some of those pictures that you have from the sky are pretty telling as well as far as how quickly things seem to be moving. So it's kind of, it is kind of scary as far as, what's your estimated time to start this dredge? I mean, are we talking a year? Are we talking six months or what? I mean, I know that you're going to get into that in just a little bit, but to me, it just seems it really is screaming for action quicker. I mean, I know you, you've mentioned that a little bit this morning, but I guess I'm just concerned there from a safety perspective. I'm concerned that it's going to be closing and making it narrower before we even get to the job. And there's, there seem to be docks on the north side and people all over those beaches on the south side. It's almost like it's becoming, are we going to have some enforcement issues? Are people supposed to be beaching there or?
Well, if they live there, sure. I mean, it's, it's technically, it's, it belongs to the property owners there along Colony Key, which is a little, there are some single-family residences there. When you turn onto Colony Drive, there are three single-family homes there and then you have the Colony Key development itself. So if it's folks that are, that live there or staying there, you know, then they would, I mean, it's their property, but if they're, if they're not, then technically the property owners could call for, you know, trespassing.
Okay.
She's got, she's got slides on the, on the timeline and the permitting issues involved, so you know.
I know, but I'm, these questions are popping in along the way and I'm afraid, like, she has those stars up there so she doesn't forget that I'll forget some of these questions. And so these are, I mean, literally that area there, if you're going to, if we're going to allow that to happen or we can't do anything about it, then this becomes even more important to do something quickly.
Okay, let me, let me clarify a point that I think, you know, just, I think would be helpful. All right, so I mentioned, you know, that really the north-south cut and then part of the reason why that area, well, one, there's technical challenges and permitting challenges, that aside, that area is owned by Colony Key. And so it is private property and the feedback we have received is that they do not support reopening that and it's their property.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
That's the north-south cut right here. All right, so that is their property. Actually, the Relict, the Relict Channel there that was there was, is actually on their property. And we had done an extensive survey with input from the Department of Environmental Protection and they, they confirmed that. And that, that map is actually in the report, the Aptim report, and, and that, that was brought up during the two community meetings that that channel is actually sitting on private property.
Okay. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the condo development there, Colony Key, now owns land westward to what point? Where the channel, the west end of where the channel was or the east end of where the channel began, the North Pass?
They own to the county boundary of Shell Key.
Okay. So, so that would be, in my mind, where the North Pass, the western side of the North Pass?
Yeah, it's not too much far past that and Parks, the Parks Department does have a sign right there that it says you are now entering the Shell Key Preserve. So it's right about that location.
It was amazing how fast they went from wanting to keep that channel open to advertising for private beach.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would also just like to state that it wasn't very many years ago that my family and I actually were out in that area on Shell Key and taking that canal through to Billy's place to have lunch or dinner whenever we happened to be out on the water. And I can clearly remember walking across that area when Colony Key was not even there. And it's interesting, as Commissioner Justice just made point, that this is, this is a condominium that rose up, a multimillion-dollar condominium. It's, I don't know how many stories it is, but it is really, really high. And when they built it, it was at the water's edge. And now they have their own private beach. So it is interesting how their ideas have changed. And Commissioner Eggers, if you really want to know the history of that area, I encourage you to go out with the Sheriff's Marine Patrol.
I've done that.
Because I was, I was just, it's unbelievable when they showed me, and I don't even remember the name of it, they've named this new island that has popped up and it popped up within the last three years. So imagine going from a boatway where you could go back and forth through the water and now there's an island right there in the middle of it. It's extraordinary.
Yeah.
So we need to think about the fast-moving currents and how quickly things are changing there as we go forward with whatever solution we come up with or not.
Agreed.
And I'm sure Jewel is well-versed in the history of the Colony Key development. It's, it's, it's got a long history there that I won't spend any time on here, but, you know, we are doing our best to, there are, there are a lot of wants and needs. There's residents on the canal, there's, there's the marina, there's Colony Key and everybody has different perspectives and we're doing our best to work with, with everybody's feedback. The other point I will make is that, you know, Colony Key has expressed some concern about Basin Three regarding any impacts to their flood insurance. They did a local map revision for, you know, for their property that resulted in a substantial reduction in their flood insurance and they were concerned about losing that. And we have looked at that very, 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 looked at it multiple different ways and our engineering firm is very, very convinced that there's no impacts with Basin Three at all. And we will be, any, any information they ask of us, we will readily provide for their review.
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
All right, so here is that permitting timetable and, you know, to your point, Commissioner Eggers, I know, didn't make my biggest point, that we talked about the north-south and why that really, you know, doesn't work. But I also want to be very clear that what we see out there today are called accretions. They've occurred over time, okay? And so when I say Colony Key owns those accretions, that is state law and the state makes those determinations. We, we work with the state's Division of Survey and Mapping and they may help us make those determinations so we understand, you know, the limits in which to work. But if, say, Elsa had come through and pushed a ton of sand right into the canal and closed it, that's called an avulsion and there is no property rights over, private property rights over an avulsion. And we could still design and permit a project to remove that sand. Okay, so there's two different things going on there. So I just want to be very clear that if, if an event were to close it, it could be permitted to be reopened.
And that's, that's a big deal because that's part of the concerns the residents have, obviously. That is a change from our initial look at that back when we were doing the community meetings. And, and I know that, and I wanted to just highlight that because they've, the county attorney's office has looked at this very closely before we made that statement. But it, that's good to know though, because I know that's a lot of the residents' concerns.
But what if, what if the avulsion, what if a hurricane came through and instead of filling it totally, it opened it wider than it ever has been before? What if that was the case? Is that possible?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. I mean, look at what happened during Irma. And Irma split Shell Key in two and now we have Irma Pass. I mean, so now we have a pass that we never had before and people are using it. And yeah, I mean, I think the island you might have been referring to is Outback Key, kind of off of Fort Soto. Huge, it just, I mean, it formed, that is a one that comes and goes every 25 years. Yeah, they, they form and it's just a natural cycle. So it's a very dynamic system. You're absolutely right. A storm could change the configuration of what's out there at any time and we would have to relook at it. Yesterday, when the sheriff went up to fly some areas, I did ask them to get video of this area specifically during low tide. So should be getting those, that video today so we can take a look at, you know, what it's showing there. And we also have, you know, staff out there. Actually, we have, we have a lot of beach work to do anyway, get out there and, and survey what has occurred after Elsa.
So, so tidal, the storms that come and build beaches, accretion, becomes property, private property rights. Can they then protect that by building seawalls? No.
No, no. So just, storms don't build accretions. Accretions occur over time just through natural processes. A storm would be an avulsion.
Okay.
All right, so they cannot do that. And bulkheadings, that type of thing would be next to impossible. I mean, we, it's a, that would be a very difficult thing to do. I don't even know that it would be permissible. Again, it's a, a very, very highly dynamic system, and actually, bulkheading a system like that would actually create more erosion. So it, it could be very problematic. So with some of the other milestones here, you brought up permitting, and that really is the key here. We have been in touch with the regulatory agencies every step of the way. And, and the reason for that is, when you submit a permit application, it is, you know, it can be a month later, it can be several months later, you will usually get what's called a request for information, an RFI. And we want to minimize that, because an RFI basically extend, basically restarts the permitting schedule. So, we get an RFI, then we respond to it, then it starts over. And, now the state has prescriptive timelines in which they have to either approve or deny a permit application. And so, the state process is, is more, more predictable, and we have that timeline laid out there. The feds, the Army Corps, we, they do not have any type of timeline. We put in a year because we, we don't know. It is not uncommon for a lot of our projects that require Army Corps permitting to take at least a year. We are hopeful that because we have been having these conversations along the way, that that won't happen. But, you know, we can't predict how, how that might occur.
Is that just because of the technical type of work? Or is it just red tape? Or is it, is it process that just gets buried somewhere? Or how does that, it just seems like it wouldn't take, I mean, it's something that becomes critically important, that would be ways to accelerate around the normal process, as long as you're not cutting into their technical review part.
Yeah. Oh, again, that's, you know, I, I do not know their internal processes and procedures. I do know it involves, when we submit a permit to the Army Corps, it involves more than just the Army Corps. National Fish and Wildlife get involved. And when I say the Army Corps, I don't mean the group that does our beach or nourishment. I mean the Jacksonville office who does regulatory permitting. But, and I, and I, those, you know, yellow stars, that's, that's part of something else I'm going to talk about, is, is it is going to involve the beach or nourishment side, because we are trying to find that public purpose to help reduce the cost of this project. So permitting is, is really the key here, because then we go through our bid and our contract approval process. The dredging itself is only three months. It's a very, very easy project from a, you know, from a implementation perspective. It's a very easy project to do. It's just challenging and time-consuming to get there.
And when, when would you suspect or expect to know when that would happen, as far as the cost, you know, finding a use for that, for that?
Probably with the first request for additional information from the regulatory agencies, that will give us a clue as to whether or not this is something they're going to accept. Now, like I said, we have been in touch with them every step of the way, and we have already posed this question. We were not going to submit permits, applications for something that we knew they did not support. DEP said that, you know, again, so long as the criteria are met, they have no problem with the concept, and gave us several other areas of the state where what we're proposing to do is being done on a routine basis. Army Corps said, so long as it meets and fulfills all of the technical requirements, they would not be opposed to it. So, again, it's, it's the devil's in the detail, I guess.
I understand. So it's, it's heading in the right direction?
It is.
Where the cost would be a lot, a lot less, but we won't know until what part, you just don't really know? And that's a federal or a state?
Both.
Okay.
It's both. But again, that's like I was saying, having those conversations up front, having those meetings, we had a lot of Zoom meetings with those entities, and all of them together in the same place, because we didn't want to talk to DEP and have them say one thing and the Corps saying another thing. We were all at the table together, including National Fish and Wildlife. We, we were all in the Zoom, in the Zoom meeting together, so that everybody was hearing the same thing.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Kelly.
All right, so this is, I'm going to, okay, big caveat here, all right? Don't look at these costs as if this is the be-all to end-all. This is our best, our best information right now, and it's one methodology for assessment. As, you know, we've been, we've talked about these types of projects, our, our current county policy is that it's via assessment. All right, so, based on the information that we have right now, and again, a lot of this goes to what we're hoping will be permitted, so we did a worst-case estimate, basically saying, the regulatory agencies do not support what we're proposing to do at all, and we have to find an alternative disposal methodology, or they agree with us and are supporting what we're doing. And so, there's a big, there's a big difference between those two numbers. The county funded the feasibility study outright, which led into the design and permitting, which would, which, if the assessment moves forward, would be part of the cost to the property owners. And then the construction costs are inclusive of construction inspection and, and all of those things. So, you see those total assessment costs. So, worst-case scenario would be the entirety of the cost at about 3.18 million. Best-case scenario, 585,000. And, again, that's based on the beneficial reuse of that material. And then, the five-year maintenance estimate. And the reason why I have a star there is because what we're proposing to do is actually permit a federally, a federal borrow area. All right, so what that would mean is when the Army Corps of Engineers comes in to nourish Passagill, this could be one of the approved sand borrow areas for that project going forward. So, as every time Passagill is nourished, they could come here and get sand. That area, that sand trap area will be cleaned out, it'll, material that goes in there will be the newer, more modern sands, and could then be used as part of this project. So, the, the potential is that there may not be a five-year maintenance estimate, because it would be rolled into a federal project. So, there's some really good benefits to, to, when I say best-case estimate, you know, there's, you know, one, it, the costs are much lower, but two, there may not be any future costs if, if we are able to permit this as part of the federal project. All right, so, we, we looked at the funding options, you know, the Army Corps has, you know, weighed in multiple times that there's no federal interest in this project. They, Passagill is a federal channel, they maintain, and they operate Passagill Channel, that is their channel. This, this is more of a local channel that supports the property owners that live in and around there. State grant programs, again, are more for larger, larger systems that are more, I don't want to say public, but areas that are more generally used by the public versus the folks that more live in and around the area.
Kelly, on that, on that point, it's, just talking to a few folks that live there, they were talking about having to pay a state fee for, what is that fee for? And what, what, has it collected? And are those kinds of fees available? You say there's no state grant programs, but are those kind of fees available for this kind of work?
No, no. They, what they're paying is a sovereign submerged land lease. You know, the state is the owner of the bottom land, and they're, so they're paying to lease that. And then those dollars go back into the Board of Trustees Internal Improvement Trust Fund. And then those, those funds are used to fund various state activities, including the operating budget of the Division of Lands. But those, those revenues are not shared back with local governments.
So they wouldn't be eligible for this kind of?
No.
The other question was raised, just while we're off on state, is, you know, you get a, you have a license fee, you know, you pay a state license. Again, the amount of money we get back from that license doesn't even begin to cover even the cost of our sheriff's water resources. It's a very small amount. And so, and, and we cannot increase that without a approved state approval for, for, for doing that. And of course, that would be a statewide issue, so, very unlikely.
Excuse me, Commissioner Flowers? Go ahead.
Good morning. So, that was one of my questions, because I recall there was the issue when the University of South Florida wanted to purchase some lands, and the submerged lands belonged to the city. So, I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. The state owns the submerged lands. The tenants or the homeowners along this canal pay a lease?
Correct.
To the state. Those dollars go to a fund that's used for other things, not for the upkeep of their submerged lands.
The state, again, in working with them to better understand those dollars, the state is not legally obligated to maintain the bottom lands. They became owner of the sovereign submerged land by, just by statehood. I mean, that's how that came to be. There is no obligation to maintain for navigation. They are simply the, the owner of the bottom lands. And those residents, and the Marina, have paid a sovereign submerged land lease back to the state to use that land for docks and other, other private facilities that are on state lands. But those dollars, yes, go back into the state's trust fund and are, are used to operate those departments, including the state Division of Lands and that, that operate the sovereign submerged land program.
Maybe that's something we need to see if one of our legislators want to submit or suggest a bill that would rectify that, because that, to me, doesn't make sense. If I own submerged lands, if I own land, I'm responsible for the upkeep of it. I'm not saying that they control the weather, certainly not. But it's theirs, and you have people who are paying into a fund where they don't even reap benefits. That's like a bad landlord. It is a bad landlord. So, I'm strongly suggesting that maybe, Brian, if you're listening, that maybe we look at that as one of our initiatives going forward. You stated earlier that there would be, that you would need to assess what the additional potential uses for the sand that you would dredge would be potential uses by the county. What would be some of those uses? And what would deter us from utilizing any of that sand, since it's shifting from one area to another?
The last bullet on here talks about the design alternatives that maximize the beneficial reuse of that material. And so, our proposal, once we got a, a good understanding of the quality of that material, and we feel that it meets the regulatory requirements that are covered with regard to beach or nourishment, I'm going to use a term, it's called template, but if you were doing a roadway project, it would be the design plans, so the nourishment template for Passagill. We are proposing to put this material within the design, the permitted and approved design for Passagill. That is the public per, use of that material. If, if we use that as part of the Passagill nourishment project, then it, it could be funded, you know, by our funds that we use for beach or nourishment.
Not all of it.
Not all of it, correct.
Some of the sand is not of the quality, so it's the portion that they can reuse.
Correct. So, that's why there is some cost in the, what we showed in the, in the previous slide with regard to the assessment, is one, is that the design and permitting costs are, are in there, and two, their portion of the construction, because some of the material does not meet the requirements for nourishment. So, but it's a, it's a small percentage when you look at the entirety of the project.
And, and do you think you may be able to get us copies of any of the aerial photos that the sheriff just took prior to Tuesday's meeting? If that, if they're available?
Oh, yeah, I will, I do believe they're delivering it on a, on a drive, because it's video, but I'm sure we can get that avail, get that to you.
It may show a significant difference from your Slide 5. You said that Slide was from 2015?
That was a compilation of 2015 through 2019. The actual design of the project includes a recent survey. So obviously, yes, Elsa just came through, and, and there may be some additional material there, but we did accommodate for that in the design, that there might be some increase, you know, that occurs between the time of us, you know, getting the permit in the, in the portal for consideration and actually dredging. So, we took that into account.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm really just stuck on persons who purchase property that's water-way property, because, and this is not anything on you or your department, you're doing a wonderful job. But I'm just really stuck on people purchasing property for a specific reason, because they have a boat. They build a dock and they have davits, because they want to put their boat in the water. The way for them to access that is through this canal, but they're prohibited from accessing it by natural occurrences, which is the silting or sifting of sand flow.
While we're on that, though, and you're talking about state resources, our, our state representatives have said that they will certainly put in for a federal grant, I mean, for a state grant at next year's budget cycle. So, it isn't, you know, they're, they're kind of waiting on this, regardless of the issue about changing state policy, you know, and them accepting responsibility, which would be obviously a major, you know, shift in policy. I, I, I do believe that, you know, we'll, we'll work towards and try to get as much state money as possible. We just needed to have, you know, kind of the design done and to be able to make that ask. But again, that'll be subject to, you know, the state's budget process.
My last question for now, I may have some later. So, I believe previous conversations, or maybe from speakers or emails, the other alternative or additional alternative would be to assess the abutting property owners.
So...
For the dredging of this canal. If that is the case, do we have any dollar value per abutting property owner?
Yeah, so, that's, that's shown here. And, again, so you can see, we've got, basically, again, I don't want to commit to this, and I'm saying this publicly, because this is one assessment methodology, and we are looking at other assessment methodologies. This assessment methodology simply looks at linear frontage of waterfront. All right, so, we kind of categorize the condos, because they're very different. Some of the condo properties are really small, some of them are, are larger. So, so we've got, you know, three categories of condos, and, and, you know, some, what, some estimated ballpark costs if, if, worst case and, and best case. And then we've got single-family residential, again, same thing. We've got some single-family residential properties that have very, very long waterfront widths, and some that are very small. So, the spread in cost is very different. And then we have the Marina, who of course has the largest waterway frontage. And so, this is one methodology, and these are kind of giving you an idea of what the cost could be, both worst case and best case, using just this methodology. But we are looking at others.
Getting Kelly to put up figures is, is a challenge. Why? Because, think about all of the different things that can change as she works with these regulatory agencies, and whether we can reuse the sand, and how much of that sand we can reuse. And, all of it outside of our control. But, but I understand the residents' concern is, you know, how much is this going to cost me? You know, I mean, and, and whether they agree or disagree with the, the concept of the assessment, just trying to, trying to ballpark that figure. So, we heard the residents' concerns. We are looking at alternative assessment methods. I personally discussed this with the Marina, you know, and because I think the residents made a really, you know, strong argument, that the commercial traffic and the amount of use of the Marina compared to, you know, individual property owners, you know, is significant. But, we also have to follow state-approved methodologies for doing an assessment. And so, we, we've looked at that through the county attorney's office, we've looked at various things. I had a conversation with the Marina, talking about their business interests, and we're going to continue to look at alternatives, and we're going to continue to engage with the Marina as we, as we narrow down the exact project that we have. We have time, while they're going through the regulatory process, we're going to continue to have all those types of discussions.
I appreciate that, because I fully understand, you know, by, you know, if they are assessed, you're paying for something that others reap the benefits of, and they're not having to. So, I would be a little upset about that as well.
And I, I do want to hit one point, because they say, well, I don't have a boat, okay? But if, if you have the ability to have a boat, under state-approved guidelines, before we could assess that in any other method, you have to, in essence, take and look at the, what would be permitted? If they built out everyone to the maximum amount, a number of docks, based upon the zoning and everything, you would have to, you have to build that out, because they could, and factor that into your assessment, if we, if we went by that versus just linear feet. So, you... just linear feet. So, and I understand the concerns of some of the residents, but again, we have to follow state-approved methodologies for doing that. So if we look at that option, we would have to do that process before we could do that assessment by dock. And so it's very convoluted and complex. But we're looking at all different options.
So Kelly, just on that point, if you have a 20-unit condo complex that's 10 stories high and has so many lineal feet along the, or a condo association that's 20 units on two stories and they're spread out, are the folks that have the longer lineal square footage along going to get assessed more than somebody that's in a high-rise because of the lineal footage along?
Well, that particular methodology is completely tied to linear, the linear frontage on the waterfront. It has nothing to do with the number of units on the property.
So it's the lineal footage of the unit itself, not the property?
Of the property, yes, of the property. So basically, you know, if there, you know, is 200 lineal feet, in this case, you see, we have, you know, a worst case or best case of about $35 per lineal feet. You multiply the lineal feet by that number and then you divide it equally amongst the condos. That is one methodology. It's not, it's, Barry mentioned one, it's called water use. And we are, you know, we have finished that analysis and we'll be getting with Barry to talk about, you know, that option. We've been working with the attorney's office on all the various options that are available to us with regard to assessment and what is the most equitable way to do this project.
And what we've also focused on is trying to get the cost down, you know,
Yeah, yeah.
per residents. I also want to say something because that, you know, if, whatever method we come up with and dependent upon, you know, the number between best case and worst case, we can set up a way of doing that over a few years, like they, you know, and maybe even giving people options. So we're looking at that also to where, you know, you don't have to write a check day one for that. Maybe it's done over two or three years or something. And so those options are also available that we're looking at. But we wanted to kind of figure out, is it more towards the best-case scenario or more towards the worst-case scenario before we make that determination?
And these issues that you're talking about are probably the most important ones is how we're going to get the overall cost down versus some of the other things. But it strikes me that a two-story condo units are probably a lot less expensive than a 10-story high-rise units. And yet those folks will be hit a lot less than those folks that have the lower, less expensive, because you're not doing it by property value, you're doing it by lineal feet along the canal. And it just seems a disproportionate thinking to what we're talking about. But I'm sure we'll consider.
And I don't know if you have a slide in there talking about, you know, places that use different methods. I think you do. But, you know, we have to go by approved processes. This is very, very common throughout the state of Florida on how they do dredge projects and how they do that assessment. So whether we agree or disagree, and I'm sure there's going to be pros and cons to each option, but we're continuing to look at the various options. So this is to put it out there, to kind of bracket it, knowing that there's a lot more work to do.
Got it. Okay.
So just going back to the funding options and close out this slide, I know we had a conversation, this board, and we had a work session back in October of 2019 and talked about dredging. And that, our current policy is that we utilize a non-ad valorem assessment process for these types of navigation projects. Our ordinance, chapter 110, was updated to reflect that and that then costs are shared to the specially benefiting property owners. So just a little history on that part of it. And then we, again, the use of other public funding and making sure that the use is, the appropriateness of the use, but also looking beyond this particular project. We have a lot of requests for navigational dredge. So decisions that are made on this project may impact other requests going forward.
And the cost to change that policy would be significant. And so we'd be taking on something that I would need a funding source for. We're going to present the budget next Tuesday. It does not have a program for navigational dredges in there. And so to change that, we would have to do that for anywhere within the county. And that would have a significant cost and need an appropriate funding source for that.
So these are the various funding options for assessments that we've been looking at. You know, the one there at the top is probably the least popular, which is just everybody pays the same. You know, there's a total cost, it's divided equally amongst all the property owners and everybody pays the same. It's, you know, it's a very simple methodology, but, you know, equitable is, you know, at least from the property owner's perspective, is probably not, probably not very popular. Property values, we talked about this methodology. The county attorney's office has advised us against that methodology. Water access is the methodology that Barry just talked about and we are pushing that out as far as our analysis and everything. And for those of you who are very familiar with stormwater utilities, it kind of follows that methodology. You develop an equivalent residential unit and you use that methodology to calculate the assessment. And then what you saw on the chart there is the linear frontage feet and that's used by Hillsborough and Fort Lauderdale. But we are looking at, you know, these methodologies. These are the ones that are out there that are used that, even a lot in Florida. So, you know, the property value has not been used in Florida. So the others are Florida-specific.
Question. Does that water access relate to use as well? Like, for instance, if I own a place, I'm going to be out on the boat once a week. So I have technically 52 uses a year. I'm just, again, just trying to be, versus a marina that might have, you know, more?
The methodology that we're using to evaluate that is through our code and it's based on slips.
Okay.
The number of slips you can have. So, and in this particular case, the single-family property is the basis, the foundation of it. And a single-family property can have two slips. So that is the foundation of it. And then obviously, the more slips you're permitted to have, you know, the more ERUs you might have generally. But we'll get with Barry on that because, I mean, ultimately, once an assessment methodology is the approved methodology that we move forward with, obviously, that is the methodology that we then carry through the costs.
Right.
And we formally petition the community, each property owner individually. All right. So, you know, the staff recommendation here is a combination. Is, one, as much as possible, the beneficial reuse. Use as much of this material as possible in support of the Passag grill nourishment project. And then the remaining amount of that assessed to the specially benefiting property owners. And again, Barry mentioned this, but just to be very clear that it can be collected over multiple years if there is a preference for that. And then there's just a layout of, there's 116 single-family residential, one commercial, which of course is the marina, and there's 30 condo complexes comprising of over 400 units. And that is all I have for you.
Okay. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have a few random questions on the construction cost. 2.95 million, that's actually the dredge, right? We're not actually constructing any kind of jetties or anything like that. That's just the actual physical dredging?
Correct.
And what portion of that is the carrying away the sand?
Probably about half.
Half?
I mean, mobilization is expensive in these types of jobs. You know, it just is. So mobilization is pretty high and then about half of the rest of it is the material. Now, again, if the regulatory agencies agree, we aren't carrying off sand. We are essentially, we have, it's just like beach or nourishment. I know a lot of you have been out on the beaches and seen that process where we would basically dredge it from the channel and basin three and we would pump it up to Passag grill, just like any other nourishment project.
Yeah, it made me think of the Lake Seminole dredge about, they were talking about another project that was double the cost because they didn't have that site like we do adjacent to the lake.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's an important part of the question. When we're talking about the properties that are being potentially assessed, we talked about the condos and the single-family residences and we talked about the marina. When you say the marina, does that include that entire, the restaurant, the hotel, all of that, even though some of that's unincorporated and some of that's in the city of St. Petersburg?
Yeah, we're doing both. It doesn't matter unincorporated or incorporated within the city of St. Petersburg. Our authority as the water navigation control authority in our charter allows us to do that.
Okay.
And the boat docks at the hotel are owned by the marina, so.
Okay.
And we are looking not just at the wet slips, we're also considering the dry slips.
Okay. The fuel, when boats fuel up at the marina, is that paying in our typical gas tax or is that?
I'm sure in some way it is because every type of fuel has a tax on it. But again, the uses of that money, you know, are restricted.
Sure. But it opens that, I mean, this is very, I mean, obviously nitty-gritty, we have a rubber hits the road kind of project here, but it brings up a lot of more global questions about how we fund things and what we're responsible for. And so it makes me think about that navigation and what responsibility do we have? And that would bring my last question is, what other projects have we done in the last five, 10 years? Because obviously, this is getting a lot of attention, but I was trying to remember another project since I've been on that we had the same kind of scenario.
Before you answer that, I want to address the issue like with the gas tax because people also say, well, because I pay more property tax because I'm on the water, which is true. You know, a lot of that goes to schools and stuff. But if we take it from somewhere else, then how are you going to fund the programs that are currently going off of what we use the current funding for? So I get that they pay into that gas tax, but we already know that we don't have sufficient money within the transportation trust fund. And I'm saying this more for the public because I get that question a lot and I'd have to cut that program, you know? And so there's, I mean, I think it's valid arguments sometimes, but the reality is that we're trying to reduce our cost and our operating budget and our general fund. I don't see anybody, you know, we're really trying to hold that, the line on that. And so those, whatever funding sources we have, they're used. And the real issue is that if we open this up and we change that, then, you know, we've got to pay for this somehow.
Oh, absolutely. And it's like, again, it is a bifurcation of you have the actual need today and then all of that precedent-setting decision-making that we're thinking about doing, how that affects us tomorrow and 10 years. But to me, it's an interesting question of, we're paying a tax on that which traditionally goes to roads and then do we think of this as a navigational way? You know, and that's, I mean, we're thinking of a lot of it as a amenity for, you know, nice homes on the water. But if we're looking at it as a navigational way, then it just brings up a whole nother way of looking at it.
It would be, it would be a huge endeavor and that would be a major change of policy. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It would be a major change in policy that we would take on a maintenance responsibility. We have that in other areas. We have that just to the south, that the owners along that drive lost, you know, boat access with that. But we also have, you know, and I think we brought this to you in 2019, other areas where people feels that we should take ownership responsibility, maintenance responsibility and drainage ways too, you know? And so these are both significant issues with significant cost impacts. I mean, millions annually that would be, you know, we would need to put resources into that.
Absolutely. And if you could answer my question about when the last time we had a similar situation?
I don't have the exact dates on me. We dredged McKay Creek from pretty much Indian Rocks Road all the way to the intercoastal for the Harbor Hills subdivision. Right before COVID, they actually started another inquiry to do that one again. We did assessment dredging up in, shoot, what's the name of that? It's a mobile home park. Joel, do you remember? I can't rethink it. There's a mobile home park not too far north there. It's a kind of unincorporated Seminole. Park Neves subdivision is on the south side of it and there's a mobile home park on the north side of it. And we dredged that area by assessment.
When you say assessment, we did a linear footage or we did a?
Yes, we did not use the non-ad valorem assessment process in that case. That particular case, it was, the methodology was the same, but it was basically a bill was sent to them and they had to pay in. It was more challenging to collect those fees, which is why going forward into the future, the ordinance was updated to utilize the non-ad valorem assessment process. We've also had requests up in Palm Harbor where the Crosswinds-Westwinds Bridge Project is going on right now. That particular canal, we didn't end up going forward with a navigational project because of soil sediment contamination issues. So it was recommended that we not move forward with an assessment dredge on that project. So those are the three that come to mind.
Seahorse Mobile Home Park.
Thank you, Joel. Seahorse Mobile Home Park.
You can thank Brendan.
Oh, thank you, Brendan. So, great minds.
Seahorse, is that the Bay Pines area?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, Kelly, just a few things. I'm very curious about the, and I think you, if you saw me correctly, had a gold star by this one, the precedent issue that we are creating here. And it brings me to another thought, that it's curious to me how we go about making decisions, about what we'll do, what we won't do and/or what we can't do. And I say that because I'm thinking about the canals, for example. The Cross Bayou Group that has been surfacing here recently, there, since the time I've been on the commission, there have been several homeowners association. In fact, I used to live in one that had several canals that were built when the subdivision was originally created. But over the years, they've never been dredged and they are filling up with muck on the bottom. So you know that it's only a matter of time before that's going to cause us a stormwater management issue as the flow into, and I do believe it goes into Lake Seminole, gets hindered in any kind of a way. And we have the Johns Pass issue that we are continuing to work on. And now we have the Grand Canal, which we've been talking about for several years. So one of the entities that I did not hear you talk about in terms of having an involvement in the permitting or stakeholder issue was the Coast Guard. Are they involved in any of this at all? I mean, don't they have jurisdiction somewhere?
Mostly with regard to safety. And actually, one of the things that we just had to do, if you've been down there recently, you saw one of the channel markers is actually 75 feet high and dry and sitting up there. So we worked with the Coast Guard to decommission that navigation marker. So, I mean, the piling is still there. They determined it was not a safety issue. It is high and dry. But we took down the signs and they told us to leave it in place if, because if this assessment, if this project moves forward, then, you know, we would recommission that marker. So more from a safety and navigational safety perspective is their role. And they also, you know, all of our aids to navigation are permitted, you know, through the Corps, I mean, through, excuse me, through the Coast Guard. They're part of that review process. And when they see things that need repair and stuff like that, lots of feedback. So there's lots of coordination with the Coast Guard with regard to how we operate and maintain our aids to navigation. They also have their own aids to navigation that they maintain, specifically the intercoastal waterway. But sometimes where our two channels meet, there's a, we need to have a lot of coordination there.
So, and then to Commissioner Justice's comments about the way in which we fund things, it is important to keep in mind, I think, that Forward Pinellas, which several of us serve on, has established a new committee that deals with waterborne transportation. And in that regard, we have And in that regard, we have a, several commercial waterborne transportation opportunities within our county and our region that are surfacing and have surfaced over the last couple of years. So how we fund those going forward, my understanding is in the new infrastructure package that's being talked about in DC right now. There are dollars there for waterborne transportation. And I think those conversations, as Commissioner Justice alluded to, could be very timely and important as we go forward to assess, how do we pay for these things that we are dealing with in 2021, that we know are going to be ongoing for decades probably, given that we are a county that is surrounded on three sides by water? I mean, I think that really boils down to public health and safety issues at some point, just in terms of how we move around. I don't know if anybody else is thinking the same way, but.
I mean, I think you've got to, you've got to bear that also with what is an individual property owner's responsibility. You know, you've got associations, they've got, they've got a canal that they've created. You know, does somebody up in mid-county want us to increase property taxes to be able to manage those and take that on as a public program? These are significant dollars, and it's not right or wrong, it's what are we willing to pay for? You know, through general use versus doing assessments and things like that. Up in Johns Pass, you've got a private property owner that has sand that's clogging his business.
But that's the same issue we're dealing with at the Grand Canal in some regards.
Well, not, well, yes and no. Yes, yes, we're doing this as they're there, it's even, it's up against their property, the main channel is clear. But, you know, the main channel's 14 feet deep.
So your point that you brought up, Mr. Chair, if I might, is very significant, because it's not just a matter of what do the people on the Grand Canal want, it's a matter of what are they willing to pay for? And what's the whole county willing to subsidize? Because I may be wrong, but we do specific things down there. Aren't we going to be required to, I don't know, how many other areas of the county may we be required to do a similar thing? Kelly, we would know better.
That's, but that's the issue.
I get it.
If, right now, right now, we get some requests, because it's through an assessment process. If we say that there's a public, you know, funding program for that, I'm sure we will get many, many more requests. And so we'd have to be prepared for the precedent that would set. I asked Kelly to give me a number, and she, you know, hemmed and hawed and ignored me forever on giving her a number, because we don't know what that would be.
Well, just look at this project, our $3.18 million, worst-case scenario, because we don't know the, where we're going to put it, that is 60,000 cubic yards of material. That's it. 60,000 cubic yards of material. That is a drop in the bucket when it comes to dredge projects. The Lake Seminole dredge project, we removed 900,000 cubic yards of material at a tune of 20 million, right? It's, it's highly variable, and how we dredge, I mean, these types of projects are extremely expensive, and then, you know, if you're dealing with material that, you know, one, cannot be placed on a beach, or cannot, or has to be landfilled, like the one up in Palm Harbor, that sediment was, it wasn't a huge amount of sediment, but it was contaminated with arsenic, which meant we had to truck it all the way down to Manatee County to an approved landfill, which took costs like astronomical. So it's, you know, the, you know, the diversity of, I couldn't really, I mean, to Barry's point, I can't really put a number on it, because there's just so many variables that you can't account for in specific locations.
But at the end of the day, Mother Nature can come along and just.
That's exactly right.
Puff it all away, regardless of what we do, right?
Absolutely. I mean, that's the, that's the challenge of living on a peninsula, on a peninsula, right? And I would say, you know, Commissioner Long, our northern border also has the Anclot River, so you could say that we're surrounded by water on four sides.
That's just another one.
Yep, sure is. So it just, you know, you guys are, what do we do with all this? I mean, but to the point that I brought up earlier, you know, we do have countywide authority over water navigation programs, and that's how we're allowed, how we can pull the City of St. Petersburg Incorporated parcels into this project. But the City of St. Petersburg also has a navigational dredging program for their canals in and around, and they use the assessment process widely if people come in and ask for it. You know, so there's.
And you said there's so many variables, and this one has a public piece to it as well, not only the homes that live there, but the business that's at the end of the canal, which is.
Well, the public piece is how we can use the non-avalorm assessment process in the first place. If this were serving nothing more than just residential homes, you know, we might be a little challenged to find that public component to this project.
You mean to reuse the?
To actually do the project utilizing the non-avalorm assessment process, which requires that linkage to a public use, a public purpose.
And being part of the preserve, is that part of the connection as well?
No, it's mainly that, you know, we have, we have commercial business in there, that people do come up and get gas, like you mentioned, and they go to the restaurants, and so that public component of it, you know, ties heavily into the ability to make that public connection and utilize this process.
So if it was just exclusively residential, then?
It would be challenging to find that public component to it. Now, we have in the past, because in some cases, some of the channels, when they fill in, the ultimate stormwater outfall is at the head of that. And if it's impacting local drainage, then that's how we can tie, and that's, McKay Creek is one of those, where there's a large culvert that goes under Indian Rocks Road, and so if, you know, sediment is impacting the ability of that water to convey through, you can tie that public purpose to it, because there's a larger picture there. But if it were just, we want our canal deeper, and there was nothing else to it, I would have to confer with the county attorney's office as to whether or not that, that test, that checkbox, is there.
The other thing I would ask is, on your time schedule there, you said on 6/23, you had submitted, showing they're submitting to the federal, has that already happened?
It actually did not. That was, when I submitted this, that was the plan, because they needed to do an extra model run, and this is, again, goes to the Army Corps of Engineers very specifically. They needed to do another model run to dredge that sand area eight feet deep and make sure, you know, that, that it met, it met all the, there were no issues with that, so there was an extra model run that they had to finish up. So that's, that delayed us a week or so, but.
But our intent is to submit the, at this point, if we can move these timelines up, we'll move these timelines up, you know, and she'll work with, continue to work with the state and federal agencies and push as hard as we can to move the project along.
And the key piece here is that there's different decision points, seems like, on what we're going to be doing, and how are we going to be getting that public input along the way as we do these different decision points? We specifically, I was specifically asked if they could speak today, and I said I couldn't figure out a way to get a representative or two to speak on behalf of everybody, because this is primarily for our benefit to try to understand.
Correct.
The process a little better. But at some point, there's a lot of things here that we are going to need some additional.
Yeah, we've pushed the petition process out a little bit, so that we can get a little, again, look more at all the assessment methodologies, and then get a recommendation approved by this body to, yes, this is the methodology that we want to use for the process, because that would tie directly into, onto the costs. The other piece of it, of course, is the regulatory agencies, and we got to know what they're going to do. We'll know what the state's going to approve first, and that'll be a good indicator, because they do work hand-in-hand with the Army Corps of Engineers and National, they aren't permitting in silos, they do compare notes. So if we get some, you know, positive feedback from the state, which we will first, they have deadlines, that'll give us some, some confidence in the direction that we're going. And at that point in time, we would be recommending to petition, to, we'd have to come back, make sure that everything is agreed upon, because then we would send out the petition notice to every single property owner, and that would give them essentially their max rate. All right, so it could be less than that, but it wouldn't be more than that. And then the process would be that, you know, well, our policy is, it's not, it's not in stone, is that we would want 60% of the property owners to agree to the assessment as proposed to them.
Now, we're going to have a public component piece to this.
Correct.
So we're going to, we're going to do outreach with the community, and have opportunities for public meetings, and, and hear their comments and concerns and ideas, immediately following this process in the fall.
Yeah, and we do have a meeting next week with some of the TBCA Association members to kind of go over all of this. Again, it's always our intent to bring this information to you first, before that gets out to.
I certainly think along the way, those critical points and letting people know when we need them to engage and the opportunity, so, otherwise, they're just going to be venting frustrations along the way, instead of if they don't have places to really give significant input before decisions are made.
Correct.
I think that's going to be really important to get out there.
It is, and I, I do under, and we had a couple of residents stayed after at our last meeting, and we talked to them afterwards, and, you know, they were raising concerns of things that we hadn't put out yet, and I'm like, well, okay, first, you know, we always try to tell our bosses before we tell, we go public with ideas, but Kelly's been working so hard, because if we can reuse that sand, that, that changes the numbers significantly. And, and so that was a key piece before we go out to the residents, because obviously, what they want to know is how it's going to hit their pocketbook, you know? And so trying to, trying to pull these different pieces together, when we don't control, the answer is out of the state and federal government, is, you know, which comes first? And so I understand the concern and the confusion, but we're there now, she's boxed it, we put this out today, and now we're going to go to, out to the public and have several opportunities for them to ask questions, offer ideas, as we kind of bring, bring this project, you know?
So do I, did I also hear you say that the piece of, you know, that we might be able to not only assess, but to spread that payment out over time, much like we do if we put meters in? They don't have to pay it upfront, they can pay it over 10 years, five years, whatever.
Based on the timeline, the assessment actually wouldn't start until after construction was done, so we would, we would know all of our costs, and yes, the, I mean, really that, I mean, one, they will provide the feedback on what, what they would like to see, but ultimately, this board makes the decision on, on how many years that gets spread out.
Okay, so that'd be, that'd be our, our decision here. Commissioner Long?
Yes, I would like to suggest, because I clearly remember that several years ago, we did one of our, our meetings down at Tampa Bay Watch on Tierra Verde, and I'm looking at this timeline of December 23rd here. It seems to me that we might be well-positioned sometime in January to do one of our meetings down in Tierra Verde, and that way, all the citizens would be able to come, and we'd be able to hear their concerns or whatever, and.
We're looking at a number of mechanisms to hold a meeting. I mean, obviously, that, we haven't received confirmation that Tampa Bay Watch is, is having meetings of that extent like we had in the past. I mean, we had well over 150, 200 people packed into that room.
Oh, yeah, it was a pack.
And with, you know, distant, you know, social distancing recommendations, you know, we were trying to figure out if we could kind of do a dual meeting, you know, some in person, or some virtually, or we just schedule a series of meetings and say, you know, we can do, you know, 50 people at a time and schedule them out, so where all the same information is presented. And the challenge there is, obviously, I'd like everybody to be there at once, because then they hear all the same things. And somebody over here on Monday may ask a question that the folks on Tuesday don't get to hear the answer to.
Right.
So as much as possible, we're going to try to coordinate a, you know, one collaborative meeting or a combination thereof that allows us to accommodate the number of people that will want to be present or participate.
Well, if it's not at Tampa Bay Watch, there were plenty of huge ballrooms on St. Pete Beach where we could have something potentially, just a suggestion.
And we did, we did look at Eckerd College, because they have a large facility, but they are not allowing any off-campus folks in at this time, so we are, we are looking.
Commissioner Gerard?
Actually, I had a question for Jewel, so if anybody else has something.
Yeah, Commissioner Flowers did, and we'll come back to you.
Just a question. So if we allow those payments to be broken out over time, which I support, and let's say something happens where that person either no longer owns their unit, their house, or what have you, is there a lien put against their property for non-payment? If someone, God forbid, passes away and, you know, the property is willed to someone, how, how would that occur?
If someone does not pay the non-avalorm assessment, then yes, a lien would be placed on the property. So that goes with the property.
Yeah, and, and the only reason why I'm bringing that up is, some people live on the beach, but not on waterfront property, but not everyone that lives there is wealthy, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Some are on some fixed incomes, and so that's just a thought, you know, that I have, just in having to deal with the City of St. Pete, when they assess property owners straight across the board, if it's 10 people that live there, they divide it by 10, and that's what you get, you know? And some persons have run into some concerns because of their income, so that's why I asked the question. I, I don't have a problem with, you know, looking at how we assess those values, but just wanted to draw that out for some. Ms. Jewel's ma'am.
Commissioner Gerard had a question.
Yes, she is. So not to drag this out any longer, but I'm going to. Three weeks ago, we got an email, or a series of emails, from folks that live down there containing a video that this Mr. Boom Easter put out about how it's the county's responsibility, and we should be paying for it, and because we leased the land for the preserve from the state or whatever. Can you, I'm sure that's not dead yet, so would you, can you address that? I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the whole video, it's pretty long.
Sure, and I will tell you, I will freely admit, I did not watch the whole video, but I will recognize Brendan Macacy on my staff, who has really worked very closely with Kelly and her staff in sorting through all the issues that you've heard Kelly discuss here today. We have a lease with the State of Florida for the lands in Shellkey Preserve and a management plan. Those two things do not require us to do any dredging out there. I mean, really, on the contrary, we're to maintain it as a natural preserve. I did ask Brendan to take a look at that issue, and he confirmed with me, you know, taking a look at the lease and the, and the management plans, that he did not believe we have any sort of legal obligation. In fact, like I said, you know, we're really required to manage this as a natural preserve, which is contrary to some of the things you heard Kelly talking about. We would have to, you know, put bulkheads and use some, you know, pretty heavy methods out there to try to open it and keep it open. So really, really contrary to the plan out there, but yeah, we reviewed it, and we do not have a legal obligation under either, under those documents that were referred to in the video.
Okay, thank you.
Any?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Long?
Since this is going to be an ongoing issue for a little bit, I am wondering if we might all be able to get a copy of Brendan's article that he wrote that was published in the Stetson University Law Review? Do you remember the one I'm talking about, Brendan? It had to do with public, the public trust doctrine as it relates to navigable waters? It seems to me that, given this issue we're talking about, I'd really like to know what your thoughts were and read the article.
Kelly, Brendan's here.
Sorry. Brendan Macacy, Assistant County Attorney. I'd be happy to send a PDF of the article to everyone. And yes, Commissioner Long, it concerns the public trust doctrine, navigable waters, how navigability works in the state of Florida. Kelly referenced the equal footing doctrine indirectly earlier, which provides that when the state of Florida became a state in 1845, it was put on equal footing with other states across the country. It gained ownership of all submerged lands that were navigable, in fact, at that time. So the article delves into the theory behind that and how that doctrine has changed over time. So I'd be happy to certainly. So I'd be happy to certainly share it with everyone and I've got a few other articles I can share as well.
Well, I'm very, very, as you know, I hope, I'm very, very interested in those issues as it pertains to protecting our environment. And so given that we are surrounded by water on all three sides, I, I would like to think that we would all have a very vested interest in reading that article. And I'm very proud of you for it. Quite frankly, I was just stunned to hear that that was a big emphasis of yours. So we'll be chatting quite a bit.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Long. I appreciate that. And even bigger one on beach nourishment is being published by the University of Miami in a few months. So I'll share that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
He's going to be a, a big star here with his own publishing company here soon. Great, great hire Jewel. Thank you.
Yeah, any, anything else today? Okay, I think we, we stuck, I think we're going to just, I was saying that if we, you know, could possibly go down the path of taking some comments, but I think we'll stick to what we did today. We're just going to have the conversation here, but it's a commission, but give some really good opportunities along the way. And I know that we'll be hearing from folks their thoughts about some of the things that we've brought up today that they might agree with, they might disagree with. I think some of the issues that Commissioner Flowers raises and some of the others that raised today about, you know, making sure that we're doing this in the, in the most fair way possible, finding out those cost savings that are, that will be huge, what we can do with that excess soil. Fill, sand, whatever, you know, what we can do with that and how that drives the cost down will be critically important. Then how, how much we can literally spread that out. I know.
Correct.
I bought a home with a meter on it and it was a 20-year. I had 20 years to pay it back, but I went to the closing and they had forgotten to put that in there. And they said, hold on before you sign, there's this additional little thing that costs you 14 bucks a month for 20 years. And so, I mean, whatever that length of time is, I'm not suggesting any length of time right now, but it does stick with the property and you clearly have a response.
Sounds like you've got a deal.
Yeah, 20 years.
And I really want the residents to know that, that they're, they're not going to be surprised about any of this. It's taken us a long time to even, I mean, when I went to the first presentation out of Tampa Bay Watch, we couldn't reuse the sand. And so, you know, this time and these studies have proved out, you know, options that weren't available at that time. So it's, it's important to have that. Obviously, it's a permitting requirement, but, but we're going to go, we're, we're going to make sure we continually engage the residents, give them those opportunities for us to hear their concerns, their thoughts, or ideas throughout this process. And so I know they haven't got a lot of information up to this point, but now we're going to start a public engagement process. They certainly can, can engage, you know, with you all and, and certainly you'll be making, making the final decisions, but we're going to have public outreach before that.
I, I do think that there's going to be growing concern about the length of time between now. Like you said, it's not going to take long once we get mobilized to do it, but it seems like getting to that point is taking a long time. Now, maybe in, in the permitting world, it's not, but it seems like, you know, we continue to have, to piggyback on the sheriff as he flies over top over the next six months. And it'd be nice to continue to see after we get these occurrences, what you might see in terms of shifting and acceleration and, you know, emergency kind of appeal to the different organizations about getting things done ahead of time. I mean, these are critical issues that, that affect people's lives and their property values and business property values and, and the way we conduct business in Pinellas County, so.
I would like to acknowledge, you know, the community that, I can't remember who said it, but they said, get creative. And that was where we really just started looking at, you know, going into a little bit more deeper depth into the quality of the sand and then what, what, what can we do with the sand? Does it meet the criteria, I mean, for, for beach placement? You know, and that's where we found out the majority of it did, but there's a component of it that doesn't. And so that's how we were like, well, what if we broke that out and we could use this piece here? And, you know, the rest of it is, is actually a very small component. It's only 12%. And that could be distributed amongst the property owners because that's not something that, that would qualify, but the overwhelming majority of it could. And we, again, it was one of those things, okay, now we got to call the regulatory agencies and we have to propose this and make sure that, I'm not going to waste time submitting a permit application that I know they're going to deny. I want them to be, to give us some level of, I know they can't rule on a permit that they don't have in hand, but they can give us some guidance on, on concepts that they would support or not support. And right now they're, it's on the support side. So, you know, we're getting creative. We're, we're trying to figure out how we can best do this. And, and then came out the second piece of it, which I know I mentioned it, but I, I want to highlight it once more, is that if we can get that sand trap approved as a borrow area, which means, I don't get a little technical here, but we're going to have to update the federal NEPA, which is the environmental evaluation. And that area gets approved as a borrow area, that means the Army Corps can pull from it anytime, you know, to support any of the federally authorized projects. So that would mean that there would be no maintenance effort in the future. So again, that's part of our permit application. We were trying to pull this all together to make sure that we didn't leave any stone unturned. We're trying to get as creative as possible and trying to minimize the cost to the community and also find a, you know, a good positive outcome for, you know, the material. I mean, if we had to haul all this down, you know, to some offshore site for disposal, the costs were really expensive. But if we, again, we can use this for a good public benefit, then everybody wins. And so we, we, we hear what they're saying and, and we have been taking all that into account and, and as we move this project forward, so.
Okay, thanks Kelly. Keep, keep us up to date on everything you learn along the way. Anything else before we let Kelly go? Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Great job.
Thank you. I thought you were going to mention Red Tide, so.
Oh yeah, what about that?
We, we just got an agreement from DEP for $200,000 that'll cover what we've spent to date for some of the beach, beach stuff, not all of the disposal. Going to probably be calling them back to see if there's any additional funding. But again, a big shout out to the sheriff. They have just been wonderful. So yesterday they were out there covering the beaches and getting good shots of John's Pass and the Grand Canal. I asked them to really focus on those two areas. But they're also today, right, flying right now, getting a bird's eye view of all the Red Tide. And so we'll, we'll work with the cities to figure out if we need to reengage the contractor or if it's localized enough that they may want to take that on themselves, but we're, we're working on it. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Gerard, you had a question?
Yeah, the map you sent out yesterday, or I guess it was you, or the day before, about Tampa Bay.
I forward them the maps you sent me, so.
About Tampa Bay. I mean, that looks, we haven't had that before in Tampa Bay, have we?
No, it's, it's precedent setting.
And is there any word, any newer word about whether the spill in Manatee County had anything to do with that?
You know, I, you know, the science, the cause and effect is, is very hard. Can we say that, you know, the nutrients went in and the nutrients actually caused the Red Tide? No, we can't say that, but, you know, the weight of evidence is, the bottom line is 215 tons of nitrogen was dumped into a semi-enclosed estuary that is controlled by nitrogen. The water quality in Tampa Bay is controlled by nitrogen. And the more nitrogen that goes in, the more problems we have. And so, you know, those types of things are very problematic. But yeah, that, the, the bloom in the bay is, is, was very concerning to everyone. Our, our state partners, our, our county partners, obviously our, our city partners. We'll get some new imagery. We'll see how Elsa helped or hurt. And I was asked about 2018. When Michael came by, everybody was like, oh, this is going to be fantastic. It's going to break it all up. It didn't. It pushed it right into us and it got worse. So I, yes, it's a magic, I don't have a magic ball as to what's going to happen here, but I mean, right now we're seeing a, a lot of dead fish and obviously it's washed up into people's backyards and it's, you know, filling the canals and so we're going to, that's, that's why I asked for some air support to try to get a bird's eye view of, of what we're dealing with out there.
So a couple of questions related to that. Are we doing, are we responsible to do cleanup in Tampa Bay? Or is it all cities that have to?
We don't have a responsibility to. Actually, in 2005, 2006, when we had a big bloom, it was kind of everybody did their own thing. Of course, our solid waste department, we did the waiver of the fish disposal, but each city did their own cleanup. In 2018, it was, you know, we want a county-wide response and so that's what we did. This is a little different in that it's, it's in Tampa Bay and it's very wind-driven. So when the winds are out of the east, it's on our coast and when it's out of the west, it's on their side. But we do have a regional Red Tide Working Group. We have a meeting next week. So, but there's some different perspectives from the different counties as to whether or not we leave it or, or we harvest it. Our, you know, we've always taken the approach that we remove it for public health, for, you know, our businesses, those restaurants that are in the inner coastal waterway. They can't have people sitting in outdoor dining with their canals filled with dead fish. And then there's the environmental component of it too.
So what, what's the argument for leaving it? I mean, just sort of be a lot of good reasons why not, why, why, why we do what we do, but.
You know, so there's some that believe that it's just part of the natural biologic process that fish die and, and that's part of it, but I, I would argue that, you know, hundreds of thousands, well, we've, we've already received two, over 200 tons of dead fish at, at solid waste. So I, I would argue that it's better to get that out of the system than it is to leave it.
Yeah, for our environment, our business, et cetera, health, et cetera, yeah.
And the other question related to that is for the attorney, do we have any legal resource if we can make a connection between that spill and this mess in Tampa Bay?
Again, Brendan will take the spotlight here. We've looked into it some. It would probably be a little bit challenging because some of the causation issues that Kelly's talked about, but we, we have taken a look at that. I did get a question from Commissioner Justice about this and so we looked into it. I could bring forward some more information on that, but again, there would be some hurdles and a bit of a challenge. But we have, we have taken a look at it.
Okay, anything else for Kelly? Okay, Kelly, better run, quick. All right, Barry, let's go on to the.
Ready, ready for the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so on our agenda review, we have some presentations. You can see on our first four items. We have citizens' public comment. Under the consentage item, consent agenda, we have a few items from the clerk. We have a doc fee report and various fiscal reports that are attached. Item number 13, I'm going to ask that we defer this item and pull it. I want to probably bring it back forward, but I want to dig into some more of the detail before I ask for your approval on this.
And Barry, could you bring that, put that on the regular agenda when you do?
Yes, yeah, that.
As opposed to?
We, we probably should have put this on the regular agenda.
Whatever, it doesn't matter.
I just didn't catch it.
That's all right.
So I, I just have some questions I'd like to go through first and we'll put it on the regular agenda when we bring it back. Item 14 is declaring surplus equipment and vehicles. Item 15 is delegated items. And 16, item 17 is a budget amendment. This budget amendment relates to expenditures out of general fund for COVID-related activities. Item 18 is a word of bid to four contractors. This is for our utilities department for various JOC contracts that they use for wastewater treatment facilities, underground utility repairs and minor construction. Item number 19, it is a word of bid to Polydine for reclaimed methanol. Again, this is done through Tampa Bay Purchasing Cooperative for Utilities.
Under item number 20, that is the monthly notice of lawsuits received. There's one lawsuit on there. It's a trip and fall on a sidewalk.
Item 21 is receiving file report for the sheriff's office, actually for 21 and 22.
Barry, could you go real quickly back to 17? That's the, the reaport, realign apportion, appropriation from the reserves to, to contingency in the general fund. That was from the COVID and that will be eligible for reimbursement, that, that money that we spend there?
Correct, yes. This is eligible expenses. They, we have to do a budget, budget amendment because they incurred these costs and this is for everything in facilities. And so we'll then reimburse ourselves out of, I'm not sure, Kevin, are we doing this out of cares or are we going to do this out of ARP? Oh, this is FEMA? Okay, so this is, they did a FEMA reimbursement on this.
Okay, so that fund, we're just putting it into the reserve, into the general fund as an expense and then we'll reimburse ourselves?
That's correct, because if we don't, if I don't put that in, then they'll overrun their budget.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Item 23 is a lead event funding. Recommendations for you. Item number 24 is an application for Florida Growth Grant Funds and this is for the Innovation Center. Item number 25 is the first three Penny for Pinellas Employment Sites program applications. They actually had four. We were comfortable with three bringing it forward. We're still evaluating the rest. And so these are the first three we're recommending.
Question?
Yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you. On the, on the projects, I was glancing and it was not at the summary sheets. And we're paying for construction. I guess I want a better, just a better general understanding of what we're paying for, what the timeline is, clawbacks, you know, requirements. Because in my head, I'm looking at, like, comparing it to the QTI and so I'm just trying to understand what we're paying for and what we get.
In this program, we are going to be doing some construction, mostly it's site work to prepare the area for the construction of the facilities and it'll depend on the project. You'll see in each description exactly what the funding is requested for. When we do the presentation, I can make sure that we address that directly.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing, Commissioner, keep in mind, when we submitted the SRTAX to the voters to approve, we did specifically limit the economic development funds to capital projects. So there aren't going to be things like incentives.
Right, and I, and I know that we're not doing the incentives, but if we're building someone, and that's how we always took it, was more infrastructure type things. But if we're building, if we're paying for part of the warehouse, then what's the, what, what's, you know?
How it's to keep them from selling it tomorrow, whatever.
Well, yeah, right. I, I call it clawback, but you know.
Right.
So, anyway.
And I'll make sure they address that in the presentation. We did look at these and I sat down with staff and went through these. And we're really trying to do this as an incentive for them to expand in these sites. So, you know, they'll go through each one of them, but in one particular case, for them to locate here versus going out to a greenfield site over and somewhere else, you know, it's challenging because the site's constrained. And so us putting that investments, it kind of incentivizes them to build there and expand their operation. So we're trying to, trying to make it to where we're, we're using dollars to, you know, continue our, our people to invest right here in Pinellas County.
And on that point, are we, are we front, fronting it or are we waiting until a certificate of occupancy for the project to reimburse them for that piece?
So there's two stages that have to come after this. The first one is, is we need to verify that the financial request is valid. So we're not going to do anything until we've gone through that process. What we're doing is getting permission from you to, to move forward. And then we will negotiate based on the project itself and what they're doing. In most cases, it's, it's site work and so we'll want to be able to help them at the beginning of the project, probably not in advance of the construction, but at least before the CEO is issued. But that's something that we can negotiate with them based on feedback that we get from you all as well.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be important to make sure that there's buy-in from them on the project so that we're not fronting it and then.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're just, we're, you know.
And we want to do this financial analysis to ensure that the numbers that they're giving us make sense based on industry standards and that our investment is appropriate for each of the projects.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for that?
Hey, Mr. Chair, if I could, one other thing I would mention to you all. I know you've seen, you're seeing these projects for the first time. You've obviously seen some of the affordable housing projects that have come through under Penny Four. Just something I wanted to mention to keep in mind. The interlocal agreement that we have with all the municipalities that establishes the distribution formula also, also called for a joint committee. They got together in advance of any of these projects being reviewed and they established guidelines under which the affordable housing. And they established guidelines under which the affordable housing projects and the economic development projects would be reviewed over the tenure period for Penny Four. So just keep that in mind as you look at these, again, the economic development and the affordable housing projects. You all did, at a past meeting, approve those guidelines that were developed by your staff, staff from various municipalities. So just, you know, again, something that I wanted to mention and keep in mind as you take a look at these projects.
Okay. Okay. And you'll, and this first go around, we'll get a pretty good description of what we're allowed to do and then what these particular projects are asking for, why it makes, why, why it passes the muster, so to speak, but also why we should consider it as far as keeping more expansion here in the area, jobs, et cetera. But we want to make sure it covers both, both of those.
And you're going to do a presentation, right? At the future meeting?
Okay.
So we'll go through that. And you can see, it's only three projects. But, you know, you're talking about new manufacturing up in an area where you don't have the ceiling heights, et cetera, and stuff. Up in Oldsmar, you know, very important to modernize the, our industrial warehouse, our, our industrial-type space. You've got the project in Pinellas Park that I just touched on. Then the other one's a SCIF. It's a sensitive information where they can go in and dial in and get what they'd have to go onsite to a military base to do. We have a lot of industries that need that access, but they don't have anywhere to go to do it. And the, and over on the military base, it's really hard to schedule time to be able to go into their sensitive thing, chambers to be able to do that. So it's a, it's a, it's a value add. It's a business enhancement for companies that, that need that type of access. So three projects that really are incentive-based to help others grow and so...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Item 26 is a resolution adopting the Ford Pinellas Safe Streets, Pinellas Action Plan, a vision zero approach to other projects. So they'll be here to present on that. 27 is brownfield rehabilitation, site rehabilitation. This is for the Bay Point Golf Course brownfield site that we purchased a couple of years ago. So we're asking, or we're going to be seeking out money for that. Item number 28 is issuance of certificate of public conveyance in necessity for helicopter ambulance service.
Under item number 29, we're asking the board's authority to file suit in this case. This is a code enforcement action. Items 30 and 31 are confidential items that I will call to speak with each one of you individually about prior to the meeting on Tuesday. 31 also applies to this, but items 31, 32, and 33 all relate to the opioid litigation to which the county is a party. You all recall, we had a shade meeting to discuss the litigation aspects of these items previously. So again, on item number 31, since that is active litigation, we brought that forward to you under a confidential memo. And if I have not already spoken with you about that, I will, I will do so prior to Tuesday. Items 32 and 33, what they are really doing is granting to the county administrator the authority to sign each of these two agreements. The reason why these are being brought forward in that manner is we don't have the final language on these agreements just yet. So we can't ask you all to approve them, but we are asking that you will delegate that authority to the county administrator, obviously working in conjunction with my office on final language there. So 32 is the agreement, well, will be the agreement with the Attorney General to move forward in settlement of this case. This sets up a framework for how funds coming through the state of Florida will be distributed. We're doing everything we can to maximize the funds that will be coming into Pinellas County. This model where settlement is taking place with the Attorney General of the state is the national model that we're really seeing in the opioid litigation, certainly favored by the defendants for a number of reasons, fewer people for them to negotiate with and greater certainty in the long run as to what their total liability will be under these lawsuits. So again, 32 is the agreement with the Attorney General that will position Pinellas County to maximize the funds that will ultimately come down here to Pinellas County. 33 is an agreement with, will be in agreement with our litigating municipalities here, which are St. Pete, Pinellas Park, and Clearwater? Sorry. Yes, Clearwater. This is something that we're putting into place, again, to position ourselves under that agreement with the Attorney General to maximize the funds that are going to flow through Pinellas County. We, we will be agreeing to a number of items to get us, get us designated as a qualified county under the Attorney General's agreement. Some of those things are, we're going to have an opioid abatement task force, will be all of the funds, and let me preface this, I know you all have heard this, all of the funds that flow out of this litigation will be directly used in support of opioid abatement. So there will be restrictions on the use of these funds unlike what you all saw with the BP litigation. So this agreement, again, under 33, is with the litigating municipalities here within Pinellas County. By entering into the agreement with these three municipalities, we will be, that, that we will meet one of the criteria to become a qualified county under the Attorney General's plan. Again, this is something that we did talk about at least a little bit in the shade meeting. I know that I have some meetings set up with some of you prior to Tuesday to go over this in a little bit more detail. But certainly, if there's any questions on these things, we can try to answer it now or certainly answer it on Tuesday or between now and Tuesday. And then under 34, that's kind of our standing placeholder on redistricting. I know that the consultant has been reaching out to you all to set up meetings. So hopefully, those are underway. And we do still intend to bring forward those appointments at your first meeting in August.
Okay. Any questions at this point? Okay. Go ahead, Barry.
Under 35, we will have Lisa Foster and Kelly here back talking about FEMA maps. We've been working, she has been working, Lisa, with municipalities. We'd love a county-wide approach to how we're managing, you know, development going forward. So we, and she'll be presenting to the city managers on Friday, tomorrow, so, as, for a second time. So she's collecting that. And then we have a little thing called the 2022 Budget to, to present on next Tuesday.
Will we have any of it populated here before then? Or it's not there yet? So it's just...
You mean the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm meeting with Cecilia this afternoon. We've had a few, we were supposed to meet yesterday and things got a little, you know, busy over the weekend. So yes, you'll have the presentation. It will, we'll have both the presentation and they'll upload the budget. Remember, this is just for the public's purpose. This is just kicking it off. And so, over the next two months, you have many meetings scheduled, public hearings before you finally, you know, adopt what you finally determine. So, but yeah, we'll be uploading that.
Thank you.
Item 36 is appointments, reappointments to the Parks and Conservation Advisory Board. 37 is your general commissioner updates moving on to public hearings. 38 is an ordinance amending county-wide rules. This is Ford Pinellas has presented to amend the residential equivalency standards for assisted living facilities. Item 39 is, and this is for utilities. No? Yes. Joe, do you, is this utilities presenting this or is this Kelly? Utility? I'm sorry. Okay. So this is a code that is no longer applicable and is causing issues. So they're asking to repeal this. And they'll explain it. Okay. Item 40 is a request to vacate a right-of-way. Our recommendation is denial of the petition to vacate due to we have potential for transportation improvement needs, utilities have infrastructure in the area. And it's also identified in our strong, our long-term stormwater drainage plans. Item 41 is a request for a land use change from residential suburban and preservation to residential low and preservation. This is one you heard before up north. And the, the applicants agreed to certain restrictions. I know there's still concerns amongst the residents in the area. But staff did meet with them and talk to them about modifications to their application. You can, it's spelled out here what they would agree to, but there, there's, there's still concerns, I know, amongst the community. So this is your second of the two required public hearings. Item 42 is, okay, item 42 and 43 go together. It's, this is an ordinance amending zoning chapter for historic preservation for the land development code and establishing downtown Palm Harbor, form-based code. It's been a long time in the making. They've been working hard on working with the community in terms of improvements and how to develop in that downtown Palm Harbor area. So this is the, the one piece. And then the second piece is zoning change to, to establish that zoning district in downtown Palm Harbor. Item 44 is approval of the CDBG and Home and Emergency Solutions Grant Annual Action Plan. That's all I got.
Okay. We, it'll be a busy, busy meeting.
Yeah, seriously.
To say the least, especially with the budget piece, I think, trying to get our hands around, arms around that, I guess, or more than arms around all of it.
Yeah. I'm really proud of our departments. You'll see a, what I believe is a good budget considering, you know, all we've been through this past year. And so, we're going to outline that. I'm sure there's going to be lots of discussions over the next two months.
Commissioner Gerard.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we could either have a brief discussion at this meeting or schedule something about, related to the building collapse in Dade County? I don't think we have anything on the books that requires inspections after a certain length of time. And I was thinking about all those towers out on the beach that were constructed back in the 60s and 70s.
So we...
Makes me nervous.
I'd rather have Blake in for this discussion. So we'll certainly schedule that if you don't mind. I'm actually meeting with him and Tom, I think, this afternoon. And so, I, I asked him to look at that. I'm going to be meeting with him and, and talking about it. I will tell you this, that it's, each, it's, each individual municipality has that authority. And, and so, we could be, you know, in a case where people want to do different things. We could look at it from a county-wide authority. But there's a lot of key issues that go into this. Is it delegated and they have to do it? What if we get that information? What do we do with it? Are we going to mandate improvements? What if they don't do those? It's, it got really complicated in the 10-minute conversation I had with Blake. But it is something that I know is going to be a concern of yours. So we're, we're looking at it from a staff standpoint and we'll, we'll schedule a time to discuss that with you.
And I would like to see it be a county-wide issue. I mean, I know it's, could be very expensive, but there were an awful lot of things that got thrown up really fast back in the 70s, up and down the beach. And that's, you know...
Commissioner Justice, and then I'll get you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. On, kind of same, in the same area, we've been getting a lot of emails and calls about the emergency radio on, on towers and things like that. And I know mainly we're hearing it in the city of Clearwater. But if maybe we could have part of a discussion or if Mr. Pogarty could do a memo to us, you know, any update from where we are on the county side of things?
We can do that also. I've asked Lourdes to prepare something for you. I will tell you that the law's crystal clear, that it, that it is a building owner's responsibility, not a county to put that in. But we will, we'll outline that for you because I know you're getting that question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ju, oh, Commissioner Justice, Commissioner Long.
I would like to get back to Commissioner Gerard's comments because I know, I have lived here since 1972. And several of those large condominium complexes come to my mind that were up then, which is way, way, way before the newest industry standards for construction came into play after Hurricane Irma, really. And so, I do have concerns about the quality and the safety of some of these structures. And I do think that looking at it in a comprehensive county-wide way is the very least that we should be doing because, as we all have heard and read, the issue with the Surfside Tower has existed for 20 years. And they knew about it, but they didn't take any action. And so, this is a lot longer than that that we're talking about. And I think what we don't know is as bad as what we do know.
We'll, we'll schedule that.
Thank you.
For a time.
Yeah. Interesting that, I was, I was just going to mention, I had mentioned in a letter that I sent to one of our residents yesterday about sending a note out to everybody. We're kind of six months through this calendar year. And I was thinking about a multiple of issues that folks might be thinking about to come to a workshop for discussion. So just be thinking about that. I'm going to send out a, 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 a letter, a memo to you guys, just kind of outlining some things. But maybe just think about some things that we want to bring to a workshop. I mean, I know we've got a lot of things scheduled in workshops, but there may be a good three-hour workshop where we can hit on maybe 10 items and just give some thoughts to it and just put it aside or give some thoughts and some direction. Things that may be weighing on your minds or that we just haven't dealt with because there's been so many items to deal with. Some, some we will all like and some we won't all like. But I think it's good to be having that discussion. God bless you. So, and we'll, we'll try to target, Barry and I, we're working on a date for that, but just be thinking along those lines sometime in the, not, not this month and not next month, but after that, September, October-ish. Commissioner Gerard, did you have a question?
I just had an issue I wanted to put on your list. And that was the, I know we're going to be talking a lot more about sewer laterals, but the thing about requiring laterals to be looked at when, when, when a structure is being completely rebuilt or even 50% rebuilt.
Yeah.
I think it's something we have to take to the legislature. And, you know, if we wait till September, we're waiting another year for it, for them to preempt us from doing that. So...
All right. Okay. Anything else for, for Barry or for Jewel or for any of you all? Okay. Thank you all for being here and we'll see you on Tuesday.